I call this Monday, November 3, 2025 meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Burton?
I move that we convene in closed session pursuant to the following subsections of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711. One, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711, A1, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline or resignation of specific public offices, appointees or employees of any public body. And two, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711, A B, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second?
No.
Second.
I agree.
That would tell me. Second, that we go into closed session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, we're in closed session.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. I will now pull members to certify that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened were discussed and considered by the board. If any member believes that the board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so, and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. This is the Monday, November 3rd meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors. I would like to welcome those of you that are in attendance in the public meeting room, and those that are joining us online. We will start tonight's meeting, as we always do, with the invocation which will be given by Mr. Williams, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious, gracious heavenly Father, thank you for loving us and making way for us to get to heaven through your Son Jesus Christ. Father, we pray that you would help us preside over these proceedings. May the things we do be pleasing to you. Thank you for all of those who protect us, and especially the right to vote. Father, we just thank you for loving this country. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item is the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
We promptly moved in second that we adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly moved in second that we approve the minutes. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So moved.
Then promptly moved in second that we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
I've got a, just a comment on that. And I didn't know exactly what to say, but the, I'm not sure who wrote the posthumous, in other words, the resolution for Gerald Bowles and Ms. Lane, but that, it couldn't have been any better. It was absolutely perfect.
All credit to Alex for her work on this.
Well, actually, I wasn't sure, but it was perfect. Couldn't have been any better.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I'm going to abstain from Resolution 3. I don't think that's a conflict, but I work in the department, so I'm going to abstain.
Right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So numbers 1, 2, 4, and 5 pass unanimously. Number 3 passes 601. All right. We don't have any recognitions. We'll move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for you to address the board on any subject that is not a public hearing. We do have one public hearing this evening. When I call your name, I do have one card. When I call your name, come to the podium, state your name and your voting district. You'll have three minutes to discuss your item. I'll give you a warning when you have 15 seconds. Mr. Walling.
Good evening. My name is Bill Walling from the Mineral District. I'm feeling as if the data center campus issue is very much like a sword of Damocles hanging over my head, as well as many others. Living in the Mineral District, I live on the, in the Ridgemont Drive area. There are 38 families there, and we're nestled right up against the Route 33 construction of the second Amazon data center. Every time it's referred to, the withdrawal is referred to, the, to that third center, it's always referred to as it's withdrawn for now, and that frightens me. It frightens me because of what I'm experiencing around our neighborhood with the construction of the second one. And it appears to me that it's really in imminent peril, and I don't think we need any more. It's also noted, I noticed that the predominant existence of these centers is now in Mineral District. I don't know whether or not it's going, they're going to occur in others, but I feel sorry for other residents if they do. My neighborhood is surrounded by one, almost. It's just creeping up. And it feels very much like the construction of a gigantic gallows. My suggestion is, since it's relevant to you both personally and politically, that you don't impose on others what you would not impose on yourselves. Now, that may not apply to all of you, but my proposal is that we end this threat and consider a motion to end the existence of further data center campuses in Louisa County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any, any more cards. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board? All right, seeing that, I'll close the public comment period. And I just want to go back to make sure that we did have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. So we're going to do that one more time, just to make sure.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously on 1, 2, 4, and 5. 3 passes 601. Okay, we'll just button that up to make sure we did it right. We want to move on to new business action items. The first is a resolution to approve the 2026 Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission Legislative Program. Mr. Blunt, always nice to have you here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to be here. Appreciate the time on the agenda, and I promise to be very brief. You do have in your agenda packet the draft 2026 Regional Legislative Program for your approval.
On page 42, starting on page 42.
All right, great. And as I had included in the memo accompanying the program, we're continuing with the top three legislative priorities that we had in place for the 2025 General Assembly Session. Just as a quick recap, those are public education funding, budgets and funding, and land use and growth management. Public education, perennial position, endorsing realistic state support for the K-12 education cost. The budgets and funding is a, also a longstanding position, priority position, really is kind of a catch-all for supporting state funding for those state programs that are carried out at the local level. It says we're not in favor of unfunded mandates. We don't want you to shift costs. We don't want you to take away local revenue generating authority. I've made some changes in the draft that I wanted to point out just, just very quickly in, across those two position statements to recognize what's really a changing relationship between the federal government and the states with regard to funding. And then some more specifics to say, if we have funding that is lost, we don't want the state then shifting cost for administering or carrying out a program that had previously been funded by federal funds. We don't want that shifted off to the localities. Land use and growth management, we've had that position as a priority for the past couple of years. We've seen a lot of legislative proposals in that arena the last two years. I expect that that will continue. We did a lot of work to strengthen that position statement and prioritize that position statement over the last couple of years, so there's no changes being proposed to that at this time. You do have in your packet, there's a list of changes both to the priorities and some of the legislative position statements. Just point out a couple of those. We had some, I think it was some budget language this past year having to do with CSA that put a temporary cap on some reimbursements under CSA, so we've got a position now certainly that we would oppose that. In health and human services, again, trying to get in on the changing dynamic at the federal level, calling for some increased investment for our local social services departments as they are going to face increasing challenges with administering particularly SNAP and Medicaid and the changes to those programs, urging support for rural hospitals that are losing Medicaid funding, and then also asking for some additional funding as communities try to assist their low working, their low-income working families with childcare cost. I think on your agenda last time, you had some letters to the state with regard to transportation funding, and we've got, you know, some new language that's been added to the transportation position to support those additional state investments in transportation infrastructure. So those are the highlights. I would be glad to take any questions that you may have about any of those particular items, and again, looking for your approval of the program tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Blunt? This basically is just a recap of what we've discussed with you previously, is that not correct?
Yes, it's been an ongoing conversation, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, Jim. Second.
Then promptly moved in second that we approve this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. We look forward to your, your probably interesting and challenging work in Richmond in 2026.
I think those are two good words to describe it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Next is a resolution authorizing a budget supplement for Holly Grove Volunteer Fire Department for Roof Repairs. Mrs. Coleman?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. This request was a, it's for the, a budget supplement for Holly Grove Fire Department for Roof Repairs, and they originally asked it through the MOG process for '27. During the conversations, though, we found that the roof is leaking now. So the request is to remove it from the '27 ask and to ask for it to be approved in '26 so that they could go ahead and get the repairs done before more damage happens. We would do it according to the public procurement rules, and then we would lower the '27 request by this amount.
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly moved in second that we approve this budget supplement for Holly Grove Volunteer Fire Department. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing county staff to apply for grants less than $20,000 prior to board approval.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? This makes your job easier.
Doesn't seem like there's any.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next is a resolution to approve and award a contract for towing and services in operable vehicles. Mr. Coon?
And Chairman, members of the board, this is just to allow for when we have code enforcement involving inoperable vehicles, if the owner is not able or willing to remove the vehicles, and at which point we need to get a contractor to do the work for them, this would give us a contractor we'd be able to utilize, and we would bring this to the board prior to any use of this contractor. Then stand ready to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? And Mr. Coon?
So moved.
Second.
Then promptly moved in second, we approve this resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Next is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Board appointments, I don't believe we have any, do we, Alex? No.
She is.
Well, it's, just wanted to thank real quick Maggie Breakville for coming out to Greensprings two times to meet with residents and tour historic Greensprings and get familiar with the western end of the county. And I am very impressed with her. She spoke to a group of residents, a rather large group. She was, she, she was so well-spoken. She put everything that we want to do in the future and her job and her position into a pretty little package bow for them, and I was very impressed with her. And just want to thank you all for allowing her to come and spend two, two afternoon, one morning and one afternoon out there.
She's great.
Yeah, she is great. She was very, they were impressed with her.
Good, 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 good.
Mr. Chairman. Commission on Aging, December 11th, second Thursday in December, 11:00 a.m., is going to be their Christmas dinner. So we invite everybody to come to that.
What's the date?
December 11th, so Thursday.
Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to county administrative report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, just a few items to bring to your attention. Been working with Supervisor Barnes and some of our surrounding localities on just maybe some, some creative approaches to affordable housing. I've also been in contact with a couple of our legislators about code changes on that front. Mr. Barnes and I were talking about impact fees and square footage fees, just different ways that we could, we could potentially approach that issue, and certainly appreciate his, his creativity, and we'll continue to bring you back information on that as, as that work progresses. Pleased to report to you that as of about 4:45 this evening, I think we had 580 responses already to the comprehensive plan surveys, so really good community participation early. I don't have, I don't have a number. I should have looked up a count today on the revenue survey, but I think we've had good input on that as well. Are you shaking your head? You don't know it either?
I'm seeing it.
Okay. But really good public engagement on those two surveys. Very happy about that. Chairman Adams and I participated in the graduate, the graduation ceremony for the, the first citizens' fully-involved rescue education class. It was an eight-week program that culminated this weekend. We got to see them do some, some really neat fire and rescue exercises with ropes and tree stands and, and the burn building, and got to give a few remarks at their graduation. They had great participation. Also, a shout-out to Scott Reddick, whose son participated in the program and gave compelling remarks as part of the graduations. So, nice, nice age range and participation from the community on that. And then a few dates to make sure that you have on your calendar, the, I think I've emailed about this, but the Louisa Works Festival, the Career Festival, will be this Wednesday afternoon, starting at 4:30. Please encourage those who you may know to participate in that if they're interested. The Christmas tree lighting will be on Friday, the 5th of December. Please mark your calendar. The parade will be on the 6th, and breakfast with Santa will be on December the 13th. That concludes my prepared remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I have, I have a comment and I have a question. Comment is to follow up on your comments on the Fire Academy, the Citizens Academy, and I see the chief is here. Rave reviews, I think 18, 18 participants. I would think about doing the second one until you had to go over that building on those ropes, so I'm not going to do that. But on the survey, you know, I, I know we're getting some updates on the comp plan survey. I know we're also planning to take town hall meetings across the county.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that we look at reaching out to various organizations. There's two Rotary Clubs, there's Lions Clubs in WACP, some churches, you know, from Greenspring to Gumspring, it's, there's varied organizations so that we get more than just Facebook crowd that responds to it.
Hundred percent.
And there's a lot of people who aren't on social media. So I know that's a little bit of extra effort, but I think, you know, maybe we could lean on the school system to email out a link to their email list, because there is a part in there about schools and public, public education and that sort of thing. So I really would like to see, and Mr. Coon, I think he might have stepped back in, but was talking at one point, we'd like to see 10, 15% of response rate. That's 4,000 to 5,000 people.
Sure.
So I'd love to see that too, but I think we need to, and we are taking it to the people, but even taking more to the people.
Staff have definitely talked about that already, contemplate many of the ideas that you talked about to the extent of groups and using the schools as well, and, and just kind of going through some avenues that are maybe not, a little bit less traditional, and we've had some good feedback and suggestions for that as well. So yes, definitely, we will.
Mr. Blunt, microphone. Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I called the county administrator and talking to him, and first of all, I want to thank our staff for really working hard to try to put some things together. But you, you can't cover everything, but I was a little left out a little bit that there wasn't anything about affordable housing in, in the survey. Because workforce housing is a severe problem, not here in Louisa, everywhere. So when we have those meetings, I want us to hear from the public about workforce housing. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I have a one.
I'll defer to the supervisor.
I just have a question. I understand there's hard copies that I've seen online. Is there any way that we can, I'd love to bring some back up to the western end of the district if there's any available.
Just let me know how many you need, I'll get them to you.
Okay.
Yep.
This is Director of the County Minister. Do we know a, do we have a hard stop on the surveys? Are we?
We don't have a hard stop yet. I think it will be as much publication as you all deem necessary. We're glad to have it continue to roll in, is our stance today. So, no.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Now we'll move on to public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight, which is a resolution to approve or deny conditional use permit request CUP 2025-08, American Tower Asset Applicant for All Land LLC Owner, Lori Schweller, I guess, is the agent. I can at least get to you, Ms. Regland, I know you, so we'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. Before you this evening is conditional use permit 2025-08 to amend CUP 1994-03 for an existing telecommunications tower 340 feet in height, located on Shopping Road, just, just north of. just north of Davis Highway Route 22, and is further identified as tax map parcel 42-34, Sona Agricultural A2 in the Mineral Election District. The 2040 Louisa County Comprehensive Plan designates this area of the county as rural outside of any growth areas. The Louisa County Board of Supervisors approves CUP 1994-03 for Southwestern Bell Mobile Systems Incorporated on July 5, 1994, with 12 conditions as shown on the current slide. The applicant this evening has requested to amend the following two conditions. First, to remove Condition 8, which states, quote, "The conditional use permit is not transferable to another applicant or owner," end quote. Second, to amend Condition 10 to eliminate the requirement of the tower being removed within 90 days of a violation of any condition, and instead using language currently being used for telecommunications conditional use permits shown on the current slide in the blue box. A neighborhood meeting was held in the Louisa County Public Meeting Room on August 13th, at which one individual attended for clarification on the application, and the Planning Commission on October 9, 2025, found the request to be in substantial accord of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and the Planning Commission therefore recommended approval to Louisa County Board of Supervisors of conditional use permit 2025-08 with the applicant's requested amendments to both Condition 8 and Condition 10 of 1994-03. This completes staff's report, and the applicant is here and has a presentation for you.
I have a question. I have a couple, which I already know the answer to, just want to get it on record, because I've seen some misinformation about this. So this is an existing tower, 300 and-
340 feet with about five or six feet of pertinences.
Yeah, with a light. Been there for several years. Currently, I believe Verizon, AT&amp;T, and Sprint all have antennas that provide cell phone service to that area.
That is correct, Chairman.
And we have emergency services equipment and antennas on that tower.
That I have not verified.
We do, I have. So the only thing that we're doing here tonight is cleaning up some kind of antiquated language in an original CUP that we don't put in a CUP application today. Is that correct?
That's correct, Chairman.
All right, I just wanted to get that on the record.
Get your mic here, sir.
I thought I would.
Well, I've got a complaint.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant, you have a choice whether you want to give a presentation or not?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, I'm Valerie Long with Williams Mullen. I'm filling in for my colleague Lori Schweller, who was not able to be here tonight. I think you have very well summarized the application. I'd be pleased to provide a presentation, but I don't need to do so unless there's any questions.
But you're available for questions, correct?
Absolutely.
I have, I have a couple of those. Thank you. Who's the current owner of the tower?
It's a company, the property owner is All4One LLC, but the tower owner is American Tower Corporation or one of its entities.
Who has owned it between Southwestern Bell Mobile Systems and American Tower?
I, I'm not actually sure, sir. Certain, sir.
Has there been more than one owner?
I believe it has. It's been in, has been in existence for 30 years, and so it's not unusual for these tower companies to change hands.
Except the conditional use permit is not transferable.
Correct.
According to the original CUP.
Correct.
So the goal here tonight, as far as you're concerned, is to remedy that and get rid of that language so that it can be transferred, and it's been transferred at least twice? Is that fair?
As far as I understand it, sir, yes.
At, at least twice?
At least twice.
At least twice.
In fact, the current, or the entity that was the original applicant 30 years ago does not even exist anymore.
Exists, yes.
Some of it has taken place due to corporate mergers, acquisitions, that sort of thing. There's been a tremendous amount of change in the wireless telecommunications industry over the years.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
This could be something that staff maybe would need to answer, I don't know, but the majority of what's in our packet is engineering figures, and I'm not sure what it all is. But anyway, in my reading through this, it looks like that Verizon was updating their equipment, replacing their equipment, something, on that tower.
Yes, sir.
Earlier this year. And this engineering stuff was done to see if the tower was adequate or safe and/or safe for Verizon to do that.
That is correct. We call it a structural analysis report. The antennas that Verizon wants to replace and put on the tower, take old antennas off, put in newer technology, those antennas are heavier than the old ones, so especially for a tower like this that's so much older than many, the companies require a structural analysis, and your county regulations may require it as well, to demonstrate that the additional weight, the tower can accommodate that additional weight safely.
So not only, this not only is just to kind of clean up things, it also shows us that this tower is still structurally capable of doing its job.
Yes, sir.
And it isn't a monopole, it is a guy-wired pole, a tower.
Correct.
Okay.
And I would just point out, for what it's worth, it was your staff, your planning intake staff that identified the problem when Verizon submitted their application.
Good job, planning staff.
Yeah.
We're kind of accustomed to that, but we totally appreciate that.
Not all, obviously, you know, it happens a lot, so I wish I could say this was the only facility we've ever had anywhere in central Virginia, but we were pleased that your staff identified it, and has been working very well with us to work to bring the tower into compliance.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So open the public comment period. Is there anyone?
Public hearing, you have a public hearing, sir.
Public hearing. If anyone wish to address the board concerning this resolution. All right, seeing none, I'll close to public hearing, bring this back to the board. I will say, just for the record, I can't make the motion, but this is in my district. I think it bounces off, my cellphone bounces off of it from time to time. I certainly don't have an issue with it, especially-
I'll make the motion we approve.
Yeah. All right, it's been promptly moved and seconded that we approve this resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Hold on, Mr. Barnes. The, yeah, the only thing I was going to say, thank you all for being here. Tomorrow's election day. I don't care who you vote for, just go out and exercise your right to vote, because we've had people for hundreds of years sacrificing so that we have that right. So, Mr. Barnes?
So moved.
Then promptly moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, meeting adjourned.